Business commitment and she said she'd be here as soon as she got here. Dan, you want to start off?
Good afternoon. The reason I'm up here this early is that we do have some pieces on the agenda, under the consent agenda, simply calling for public hearings on potential bond sales. But they've gone through a little bit of consideration and a little bit of changing in the way we're taking a look at doing it. And I wanted to at least give you a starting look at how we got to where we are with what we're proposing for the bond sales. When the public hearings come up, I'll be explaining more about the hearings themselves and talking a little bit more about substance. But I wanted to take you from where we started to where we are now. This is where we started. The two pink projects on the left there, the Echo property and the Rivers Edge, were actually scheduled to be part of the 2015 A bond sale. But the bond sale was not as large as the budget that was adopted. What happened was that there was a meeting of department heads, I guess, in January or February of that year. And it was, it was, the projects were reduced to reduce the bond. Then the bond was sold, but then the CIP didn't get revised. So those, those bonds at the two, two million seven hundred and fifty thousand in the Rivers Edge for one point two million are in process and being counted on. And if you'll remember, that's what we passed advanced refunding resolutions on last year, was being able to start those projects without actually having the bond proceeds in hand. So those were there. The rest of the pieces there are, anything below the pink, was what was in the CIP for fiscal 2017. And that will be part of the 16A bond. The third piece is that top piece, that's the parking ramp lease purchase down payment. That's the $2 million that's supposed to be used in the Rivers Edge development for the down payment on the parking ramp for the lease payments. And that was discussed and the hearing or non-hearing, whatever it was, I wasn't here for it, was decided last January, I believe. So what we ended up with was, in the yellow, 3.95 million in straight GO bonds, non-taxable, and 4.75 million in taxable GO bonds. Now, looking at that, that's an awful lot of taxable bonds to be paying out on. So the thought was, if we can find another source for that 2 million of taxable parking ramp lease purchase down payment, we can save ourselves somewhere between 95,000 and 110,000 in interest by having those be not taxable, or the proceeds that are used by non-taxable. So my thought was to go to the gaming fund, where we have other projects that do qualify for bond funding, move those gaming projects into the bond proceeds, and then move the parking ramp lease purchase down payment into the gaming fund. That does two things. First of all, it removes it from taxability on bond proceeds, which saves us money. It also uses a different source of funding, namely the gambling tax proceeds that we collect to make that payment. So what we ended up doing was, under the 200, under the 2016 A bond amount, we went in and from 17, 18, and even 19, we collected about $2 million of proceeds that we could take from a bond and issue those this year, use those for ambulance replacement, building demolitions, library repairs, and then repairs to other buildings to switch the source of those funds and remove the taxability of that, of the money that we'll be using for the lease purchase payment. What that does then is this becomes what we're actually calling the public hearings on. The blue is public hearing number one, the lighter blue is public hearing number two, I'm sorry, the orange, the Echo property acquisition, property acquisitions are the second hearing. The third hearing is the library repairs, the fourth hearing is the trail improvements, and the fifth hearing is the building improvements. So what we've done is to move that lease payment out into the gambling fund and then move the gambling funds pieces over, reducing our taxable GO bond from the 4 million down to the 275, from 4 million seven fifty to 2750, again, saving ourselves that interest to get to the point we're at. We're still looking at total proceeds expected of 8.7 million dollars, but we're reducing our interest costs by removing the taxability of those bonds. Again, there would be five different hearings, and those hearings were put together primarily, the hearing one, all those dark blue pieces are, as you can see, essential corporate purpose. Those are not subject to reverse referendum. The other ones that are general corporate purpose are indeed subject to reverse referendum that's in the notes. If you look at the resolutions, those will be published in that way to indicate that. And then we'll come back in two weeks and talk about the actual projects, what we see as the projected payoffs, what we see as the projected impact on taxes. And we're expecting to keep ourselves in that 245 to 250 per thousand dollar levy range for debt, which is where we talked about in the last budget, we talked about stabilizing that at the 245 to 250. So that's what I wanted to lay out for you this afternoon, is even though we're just calling the public hearings today, things have evolved to get to this point. We're looking at the same numbers, but we're looking at coming at them from a couple different directions. And I wanted to, basically in the spirit of transparency, let you know early on what we're trying to do here and find out if there are questions either now or between now and the hearing.
The abbreviated version is if we did the taxable bonds, because they're taxable, they would command a higher interest rate. We switch things over to municipal, non-taxable basis, use gaming to pay the taxable portion and save approximately 95,000 in interest expense?
Ninety-five to 110, depending on that spread between non-taxable and taxable bonds. And that's, that's been anywhere from 85 basis points, which would be point eight five percent, to as high as 1.2 percent difference. And it's been up as high as 2% within the last couple of years, which would increase the savings, but right now, we're not quite sure where those are going to sell.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand all your points correctly. I understand the points about moving some of the CIP items, or at least reclassifying the financing from gaming into, into bonds. And I understand that point. You said that there's another offset as it concerned Rivers Edge Park, or?
Um.
That you were pointing out some, some of the major fund.
Well, the Rivers Edge Park was scheduled to have been sold last year.
Okay.
In the budget. But the budget that was adopted was not the budget that was discussed by staff because there had to be reductions in that bond, because we couldn't sell 10 million dollars worth of bonds last year, and we didn't. We took that capacity and we refunded the 2007 bonds with that $2 million. Or about, looks more like about three, three and a half million.
The, the timing on this, I know that we, that we reacted to these, we authorized bond sales to basically fund CIP projects.
Yes.
Going back into, into some recent history, that was done in, back in February of 14.
Right.
And then, then again, in February of 15.
Yes.
Then, then of course, we, we, we had the vote for the bonds on the police department building in May. And now we're, we're doing, we're doing this, we're now funding the CIP much later in, in the year.
Correct, correct.
But what's the reason for, for that delay?
The reason for that delay was trying to get to the, first of all, to the amount of cash that we would actually need. The second piece of it is, is simply that we got caught up in a time crunch, and in trying to straighten out where we have funds and where we do not have funds for CIP, we needed to know where we had money.
Hmm.
If you recall, when I went through the cash flows for, when we did the CIP, I had a back section on cash flows. And in some of those funds, we were showing that cash flows were going to be negative, and we needed to make some adjustments there because we can't spend money that we don't have. We also showed that the capacity for bonding was dropping, that this year it would be about 6 million 700,000, and that next year it would be about 2 and a half million. And the year after that, we probably will not be able to sell CIP bonds before we get back up to a level where we can sell CIP bonds without increasing the tax levy. Now, if we're comfortable increasing the tax levy to do some of these capital improvement projects, we can do that. But my understanding is that we would rather not do that at this point.
Some of the refinancing of old debt, the repayment schedule on that, put us in a logjam over the next two years that we've identified, we understand is going to be there. It's a two-year timeframe that will have to be, unless we want to increase the city's debt levy, we'll have to be cognizant of and, and try to work around for two years. And then I believe it opens up three years from now to the $9 million range of, of potential debt exposure that we could do three years from now, but.
Best practice in a city our size is to sell bonds that amortize over 10 years. Where we were was that we needed more funding. And so there was an effort by our, our financial advisor to stretch that repayment period out to 15 years. And that's, that's one way to do it. What happens, though, is that when you stretch it out to 15 years, you don't have bond issues falling off at the far end to provide you with additional capacity. So because they were extended out to the 15 years, we need to wait a couple of years while more bonds get paid off and open up capacity for that. Then we continue to try to structure at the 10-year best practice level and, and get ourselves on some kind of consistent expectation, rather than trying to figure out, how do we wrap sales around, how do we extend the, the amortization periods to lower annual payments, even though we spread them out a little further? There were just some best practices pieces that I felt we had to strongly look at.
Okay. Well, you, you made a good segue. You started talking about your, your comments made about two months ago when we were considering the CIP.
Yes.
And our limitations with respect to bonding capacity, or what we thought we're, we're going to approach some brick walls at some point. And you, you addressed that, that 2.5 million dollar number at the time we considered the CIP for bonding limitations. And, and the total amount of, of the bonding authority being sought by, by the resolutions for public hearing next week come up to about 8.8 million dollars.
8.7, yes.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around these, these two different concepts and.
Okay, if you take the, the, first of all, the two pink pieces, the 1.2 million and the 2.75 million, those were taken off of the 6.7 million that we expected to be able to issue because they needed to be funded. So out of the 6.7, that 3.95 million had to come out of that 6.7, even though we had hoped to get it the prior year. So that reduced the possibility. Everything else then, except the 2 million that was there for the lease payment, or the lease down payment, totaled up to the 2.5 million. What we're looking at here, that brought, that would have brought us to the 6.7 million. What we're then looking at is the 2 million that we had for that lease down payment. If we sell that, we can use that for other projects out of the, that would have come out of the gaming fund, freeing up those gaming fund dollars to pay the garage, or the parking garage lease down payment. Does that get you any closer?
Yeah, that, that helps me a little bit. I, I guess, does that change the, the, yeah.
Nothing up my sleeve.
Thank you for that. Does that change the, the description of how you assess things back in, in June then, when you were describing these, these limits? And we, we considered these different sources of funding at the time we approved the CIP.
Right.
And now things are, are changing out a little bit.
Yes.
Will, will that have an impact upon the, the timing of, of any of the projects in the CIP?
Uh, no. If anything, it will move a couple of them up forward to make sure that we get, for example, that 19 project on library.
Yeah.
I believe that's the bathroom renovations?
Bathroom renovations.
No, for fiscal 19, I believe that's the renovations. So we may want to try to move that up with a couple of the other door replacements that are being proposed over there, to get them done within the timeframe that we have the bonding money available, which is three years after the sale of the bond. That's, that's the effect that it would have. I don't think it's going to delay anything.
Yeah. Well, no, it, it looked as though that some projects were being moved up, I guess was, was part of my confusion and concern.
Well, and the funding for them is being moved up, but we can still keep them in the same schedule because we have that, that three-year window to use the proceeds to do the projects.
Hmm. Okay. Because this goes into our discussion of how we, we put together and review the, the CIP. And we, we were told that, that work on the next CIP was going to begin immediately.
Mm-hmm.
I'm anxiously awaiting inputs on how that's going. But I guess since we just passed this, the last CIP back in June, and now we're, we're looking at things that are now changing up quite a bit within the, the CIP, I'm just a little bit concerned about, so what did we say at the time that we passed the, the CIP?
And it's, what we had, what we're changing really is the funding sources. We're not changing the total CIP or the expenditures coming out of the CIP. We're not increasing those expenditures. What we're doing is shifting the sources of funding to reduce the interest payments on the bonds that we sell.
So with, with the amount of, of bonding that's, that's taken place over the last couple of years, and now we, we have the police headquarters bond effort, now this, this bond effort that we need to consider here, do you have any long-term concerns about the, the growth in, in bond debt?
Um, I do have some concerns because of ideas that have come up for other sales of bonds that we haven't even talked about yet for other projects. We've talked about them among staff, and we have to look at how those impact our overall use up to the debt limit that the city has. We still have about, I think, 65% of our limit available. But we have some big pieces coming up, like the police station, that are going to be a separate issue. And we have to look at both timing on those, to use those appropriately within the, the windows that we have, excuse me, plus we have to look at, will we be able to keep bonds bank qualified by keeping the annual sales under 10 million? And bank qualification is another piece that can make a change in our, in our interest rates, but that's stuff that we're trying to work through right now, think about where that's going to take us. I guess the answer to your question is yes, we're thinking longer term, trying to lay out a plan for what we know now. And, and we'll be able to give you some idea what the impact is, both on, on the amounts of debt that we'll have outstanding, how that affects our limits, and how that affects our property tax levy.
So Dan, for some who are new and some who may need a reminder, if you issue more than 10 million in one year, banks are not eligible to, to bid on those, which then ultimately could raise the interest rate of the debt issuance.
Correct.
So we try to keep it under 10 million, obviously, in the year when we do, the police station will exceed that and.
Unless we change the timing and maybe do a couple of bond sales. And that's, that's where we were looking at and waiting for the, the consultant to get us a cash flow piece so that we could make some decisions on how are we going to cash flow that. We've also got funds coming in for certification of the levies, the flood levies. And there's a lot of money tied up in that. It's coming in through sales tax, but if we limit ourselves to the amount of sales tax cash that we actually get, it's going to slow that process down. So if we sell revenue bonds and assign that sales tax to the payment of those bonds, it doesn't have an impact on the tax base or on the tax levy, but it does have some impact on how much of our debt limit we use to achieve that and how fast we pay that off.
Which is one of the debt issuances that we talked about, that Dan alluded to. We've got 20 years' worth of Iowa flood mitigation, sales tax revenue that can pay for repairing our levies, but we got a, a 10-year window, really probably closer to eight now, window of when the levies need to be certified and FEMA remaps. And so if we don't have the sales tax to do it, well, we need to get it done in eight years, does it make sense to do a revenue bond based on getting back the sales tax over the next 10 years after we're completed?
I understand.
We're thinking, we've come to all the best conclusions.
Kind of what we're trying to do right now is not raise the debt levy. And so all this won't increase the debt levy.
Well, the, the police station will increase the debt levy.
Well, definitely 51 cents per thousand.
Yeah.
But, I mean, kind of the caveat is that it's going to increase 51 cents per thousand. We could issue more debt, but it will be a 51 cent increase plus if we issue more debt with, and I mean, that's a decision that you'll, if we ever come to that point, wouldn't have to contemplate, so. Our plan at this point is to batten down the hatches for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, tough to do, but quite necessary, I understand.
Bing.
Bing.
Any other questions?
Otherwise, I'm, I'm available anytime anybody wants to talk to me about it.
If you would be so kind, if you would email us those slides, I, I would appreciate it.
Oh, sure.
And, and I appreciate the, the comments. Would it be possible for these, for these resolutions, and I've tried to do this myself in, in preparation to go through and try and line up the, the CIP item, and that's where I found the disconnects until you, you provided your explanation. Could we have a revised breakdown of the CIP projects and how the, the funding changes under this new?
Sure, sure.
That, that would be quite helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It's what you pay me for, and I appreciate it.
Other questions for Dan? Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Review the agenda, which is fairly brief, but anything on the consent agenda?
Now, we just ran through 3C through D, see if I had any other questions about Not at this time, but thanks for bearing with me.
Yep, no worries. Anything on the public hearing? Or anything on the second page, maybe we just do it that way?
I got some questions for Matt on the West Broadway.
Yep. Let's, anything else before we get to that? That may take a while, so let's.
Yeah.
All right, I guess not.
Have, first question, with the interstate being already done, have we, do we know when Iowa DOT is going to put, or if they're going to put an entrance onto West Broadway?
There will be access to West Broadway, there will not be a direct exit. It will be via frontage roads is what's being proposed.
Frontage road with a Ninth Avenue exit and an Avenue G exit. So Avenue G will go south on the west side of the interstate. Ninth Avenue will go north on the east side of the interstate. So there's no, you won't get off a ramp and be on Broadway.
And there's the additional access then off of 480 into around 40th?
Furthest west intersection will move, lighted, signalized intersection will move from 35th to 41st.
Is there a thought of maybe starting at the other end of Broadway, if that's going to all be redone anyway?
They do not go past the point where we're starting construction.
Okay.
They basically stop at the gateway, and that's also where we start, so 36th Street. So we won't actually overlap with reconstruction. Based on their latest schedule, they're about four years behind us, so we'll be long done with that part of Broadway before they get there. So they'll, they'll be meeting up with our reconstructed corridor.
They've scheduled a timeframe based on, on the longest term, four years of property acquisition, and so if that goes quicker than, than four years, it'll, the construction will go faster than four years. But I think 2023 is kind of the target date for completion.
And, and looking at this, there's a, there's a lot of entrances that have a C by them for closing them into these businesses. Can you explain to me why they're being closed, first of all?
Well, yeah, I guess a little bit of discussion on the purpose of this document is not a construction document. It's not that we are going to close every one of those driveways, but it is a goal to reduce the number of access points to West Broadway for multiple reasons, mostly being. mostly being improved traffic flow on West Broadway and increased safety by limiting the number of turning movements that enter and exit West Broadway. So that's the reason overall that we want to reduce those number of those driveways. If, if there are opportunities to do that, we want to do that. What's represented in this plan is through high-level review where there are potential opportunities. We did not discuss those with businesses. We obviously would do that before we closed a driveway or moved a driveway. Some of them are closed with the intent of sharing a driveway. So two adjacent properties could share one access instead of both of them having an access. So one would close, or two would close, but one new one would be added. So the Cs and the Ss that are represented in this plan are just a concept of what that could look like. Until we get to final construction drawings, we're not closing any driveways. And that would include obviously a lot of coordination with the businesses themselves before we did that.
Okay, and these...
And that's for safety reasons. And, you know, I'm looking at the one here, for example, the hand-picked auto has three access points into a car lot, so.
There's, there's some properties that basically their entire frontage is a driveway today. It's, the curb is recessed, the whole frontage. We want to avoid that. We want to limit that. But again, we've, we've been in direct coordination with all the phase one businesses because that's what we're designing right now. We haven't got further to the east because we're not into design at that point.
Okay, and what if the businesses say, no, I don't want to, I don't want to have access to my property taken away?
Unless there's a, a large safety concern, like it's five feet from the intersection, it's probably going to remain. And if it, if it, if I choose that it, it should come out, it's going to come before you probably. And you, you ultimately will decide, I'm going to recommend that it be closed. Business may say that they don't want it to be closed and you guys will make that choice.
I think as part of that, we have to remember too, a lot of those entrances were from the era before speed limits and indeed before horseless carriages. There were horses literally for a lot of those entrances. And to the extent a lot of them were then added in the early twentieth century, I looked back, the speed limit was ten or fifteen miles an hour, depending on the year, which was considered very high. If you look, if you look back, there were a lot of people thinking the speed limit ought to have been lower. That was way too fast for people to go. So in other words, times change. And, and I do, I do think we have to look at, does a business need three entrances? Do, do five businesses in a row need five separate entrances? When we want the traffic to, to go at thirty-five miles an hour, thereabouts in this day and age, and the cars are much wider and longer than when, when these things were designed. And you can see that throughout town, particularly the older parts of town, where you look at garages that have been added on to. Because Model Ts were significantly less wide than the modern vehicles and I, and I don't see that changing anytime soon. So I think we have to remember, we're, we're dealing primarily with the late nineteenth and early twentieth century roadmap that no longer is fit for purpose for the twenty-first century. And so things will have to change. And it, and change is always difficult. I, I realize that. But the safety and the interests of the whole community and of the whole block must be no less important than one individual business owner. The business owner's interest isn't important, but it can't veto or supersede the interests of, of public safety as a whole, at least, at least in my mind.
That's why I think your, your suggestion, Mr. Cox, is, is well-taken. To Mr. Sandow's point about, you know, how are we going to take this on if there are disagreements? And the recommendation is that, in, in those rare instances where you just can't come back to accommodation. If you come back to, to us then to try and resolve those things, then, then we inject some accountability into it. And, and I think that's, that's a good piece of due process. And, and kind of along that similar line, we, we talked about the brickwork. You know, we had a little bit of squeamishness about the, the brickwork based upon, you know, prior experiences. And, and you laid out last time, you know, how, how you think that things had changed and evolved over time and that we were ready to take that on. But that you would likewise be, you know, coming to us as needed to keep us updated about that. And I appreciate that because that's, that's what's going to make this overall plan work. And so I thank you for, for being open to those sorts of accommodations and, and keeping us informed as well as the landowners.
Yeah. I mean, I, I feel like we're, we're, we're making a lot of effort to inform the businesses along this corridor. We had individual invitations sent to each business, not only the business owner, but also the landowner. We did that by email, phone call, physical letter, door-to-door knocking on the business. We still only got about fifty percent attending those meetings. I can't do much more than drag them physically to the meeting myself. So it's surprising when I hear people, I got, I took four calls this afternoon about people because somebody told them that this was on the agenda and they didn't know anything about it. They were further to the east. They're not in phase one. But we have made a lot of effort to inform these businesses. We're not looking to hurt the businesses. That's what this whole plan and planning effort was about. That's why we're doing all this outreach. That's why we're phasing the project the way we're phasing it. So, you know, I, I don't believe that I'm naive enough to think I can close a driveway and get away with it without telling anybody about it. That's not the plan. That's not the intent. And so obviously we have a goal. This, the goals and objectives of the corridor improvement are represented in this document. This goes beyond the reconstruction of the street. This is a long-term, this may be a twenty-year, thirty-year document that this lives and is, is developed with the plan established in this document. Maybe we don't do it when we reconstruct it, but a business changes hands. It's torn down and redeveloped. At that time, we look at, hey, now it makes sense to share a driveway or eliminate a driveway. It doesn't have to happen with phase one or two construction. It could happen ten years down the road. But this gives us that plan so we know what to rely on when those redevelopments come in.
Yeah. And, and I, I just want to express, you know, some of my kudos to, to you and, and, and the, the other parts of the staff on the work that they've done on this because there have been a number of changes to, to the plan from what it was originally put, put forward. And that's obviously the result of a lot of good public input that you've labored so, so hard to get. And so I, I congratulate you for going to that amount of work and being sensitive to it and being as responsive to it as, as, as everyone has been.
Yes, so just to clarify then, so I had someone that emailed me two right beforehand asking about this. They're way down. I don't think they're, they're definitely not in phase one. But yeah, saying the same thing. They were told that the, their interest was going to be closed and that that was going to be voted on tonight. So I mean, that's not the case. For one thing, you would have, they have not heard from you. So you, when it gets to their phase or whatever, you would come and talk to them and then it, it would still come forward before.
I, we've spoken about it before, but because of the change in profile of the road, we're going to have to get on private property to tie in driveways, tie in sidewalks. And, and each one of those will, will require them to sign a document that allows us to enter their property to make those improvements. So even the properties that we don't have to acquire right away from, we're going to have to deal with on a one-on-one basis to get that agreement. These conversations will be part of that agreement that says, in order for us to build our project, we need to improve your driveway so it ties in properly. We also would like to look at your driveway width, let's say. I mean, there, there's lots of opportunity. Maybe they have a sixty-foot wide driveway and we think thirty-five is appropriate and doesn't affect the circulation on their, their property. We're going to suggest it be reconstructed at thirty-five. But we're not going to do that without having those conversations.
Okay. No, that's great. I think, all right.
And like, we haven't had those conversations with properties beyond phase one because we're not there. I don't have the details. I don't have a design even conceptual to have an intelligent conversation. So when we get to that point, we can show them something on paper, we'll have those conversations.
Plus, there's always that difficulty of whenever there's any major street improvement, in this case, complete rebuild of a street near your home or business. We probably have all experienced it at one or the other. I know I have. And it's frustrating because at the same time, you want all this to happen, but you don't want to be inconvenienced at the same time. And, and frankly, and again, we have to tell people what they need to hear, not what they want to hear. You, you can't have it both ways because we can't do it in one day. It'd be nice if we could. But I appreciate everything that you're doing to, to, to ease the inconvenience. And certainly it, it adds a lot to the cost because the, the least expensive option would be to shut the street down and rebuild it all at once without any interruptions, that is, traffic. But that's impossible for everybody else. So we are, I think people need to remember that we are giving a lot of leeways. The general taxpayer is going to pay an appreciable amount more to, to, to lessen the inconvenience to the properties. But it's a two-way street, I guess pun intended. To do that, at the same time, they're going to, there's going to be some inconvenience they're going to suffer. We're going to do our best to coordinate it and work together, but it's not a hundred percent benefit to them with no inconvenience to them. I, I, I don't think anyone, we'd all wish for that, but none of us are naive to believe in the real world that you can get a hundred percent of what you want without any inconvenience. And, and, and that can't, that can't be. So there are times where, when people, I'm, I'm not discouraging people coming with suggestions or concerns about it being delayed, but just to understand where I'm coming from, speaking for myself, a lot of times, if, if a business, or a home for that matter, in a neighborhood, is, is going to get completely new street, new sidewalks, increasing the usability of their property, the value of their property, the utility of their property, and it will involve some, some inconvenience. There's some things we can do to help with that, but if you want me to make all the inconvenience go away, I can't. It's one or the other. Do you want the new street or not? And, and we as a community have, have determined, I think quite rightly, that we need a new West, West Broadway. And so there's going to be some inconvenience in the short term and some of that we're just going to have to put up with. And so I think people need to be realistic that, that as part of their shared responsibility, their, their rights and responsibilities. And one of your responsibilities is you may be getting an improved portion in front of your business or your home when it happens in residential areas, but it's going to cost you some inconvenience as well. And you have to take both. And that's part of being a citizen and part of the shared responsibility we all have. So I'll, I'll do my best to try to reduce those inconveniences, but can we make them all go away completely? No, and you're just going to have to put up with that. And I, I think we show you great respect by being frank with you about that. And so that you might not always like to hear what we're saying, but it's the truth.
We have not tried to sell this as it's not going to be an inconvenience or that it's going to be an easy project. I think the approach we're taking is we're going to try to limit it as much as we can and mitigate it as best we can by additional signage, putting in the incentives to try to keep the contractor engaged and get done as quickly as possible. Whatever we can physically do in the contract, we're going to do to minimize the disruption. But it is going to happen and...
I agree. And the only reason I mention this is so people know that, as, as Al was talking about, the accountability of, of the folks vote for us, all of us up here. And as part of that, I, I think people need to understand that, I, I believe I'm, I'm correct when I say that we, based on our votes, that we, we back this project fully. There are things about it that we could do differently or better perhaps, but be that as it may, generally speaking, we all back this project and so the electoral accountability backs it, staff expertise backs it. And so people know that, that we're all in this. And, and I think that's helpful to your, to your position. It's certainly helpful to us to understand that the, the expertise is, is behind this project and informing it significantly. And I want to echo my colleagues when they say that grateful to all the work that's being put into this and working with people. Because it, I am hearing that a lot, as I'm sure all my colleagues are, that they're, even when they don't necessarily like the answers, folks feel like they've been treated fairly because they are being treated fairly and you're going out of your way to do it. So, so thank you and please keep it up.
Don't be naive and understand this as well as you can because you will get questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But frankly, I think you're doing a disservice to the citizens if you walk up and down Broadway telling people they're going to close your drive, which is apparently what's happened because we've been inundated with phone calls.
Well, I showed some of these people today this, this document. I mean, I went into businesses and they had never seen it before. So that's why you got the calls. And they are concerned whether this happens right away or not, but it is the plan. I mean, that's the goal. So I mean, for them to not ever see this, that's concerning for me that the business owners haven't seen this, whether it's phase one or phase two or phase four, eventually that's the plan.
But they could have seen it. They just haven't taken the time to see. I mean, I will give Matt credit. He's tried hard to get.
And I'm not, and I'm not discounting that you've tried. I'm definitely not discounting.
And part of it has to come to us first anyway because as, as, and I, I totally appreciate your points, but part of it is, is coming to, to the mayor and to this body as, as part of approving it before. We certainly don't expect them to go out there with, with ideas with no input from the mayor or no input from the council. So, so I think it is a question of timing. I do think the information, i- if we approve this tonight for certain, it ought to go onto the website for discussion. But I, I do think people need to understand the, the point about how this, this is the conceptual starting plan. It's not, and by its very nature is not written into stone. It's a discussion. And there's going to be some people who don't want any change whatsoever and we'll have to talk about it. Because like I say, I think it's unrealistic to expect a new, a new street in front of your business and to not have to give anything in exchange for it. I just don't think that's fair to the other town.
Well, I, I agree. And I think everybody I talk to is probably open to compromise in talking about it. But, I mean, if the C's there, it's a plan, it's a goal.
It's a goal. Yes.
So they have concerns. And as I said before, my main concern is with the businesses. I mean, that's, for sure, this has to be done. I mean, without a doubt, West Broadway needs reconstructed. We need storm sewers. Again, like Nate said, I think we're all behind this plan, but my main concern is these businesses. And if you're going to close, not, not necessarily, even if it's a plan, are these businesses going to be compensated for that entrance being closed at some point?
It depends on the details of the, the closure.
Part of it too, isn't it depend on, I mean, if we're going to help upgrade, like create a new shared access point or help with, I assume there'll be, if, if nothing else, some a bit of an elevation changes or remove several layers of asphalt in the street. There'll probably be some change.
The bigger change is from the, the roller coaster profile change so that we can get water to go to the inlets.
Yeah.
The street curb is going to go up and down in different locations. And if it happens to be up where there's a low driveway, we're going to have to chase that driveway back.
Sure. And, and if we're doing a lot of that, a lot of that, I think, if I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of that is part of the project and it will be done at general taxpayer expense. A lot of the entrance, not, not necessarily saying going all the way into their property, of course, that's private. But, but to the extent a public project affects the, you know, suddenly there's a foot and a half difference in grade, you know, we're going to have to pay for that altogether. And as part of that, it'll be up to modern twenty nineteen or whatever year it is, standards. And a lot of those are way, no disrespect to anybody, but they're, you know, nineteen seventy-two standards, which aren't quite the same anymore. I think they're going to be getting a better, safer road at, at no cost to them, to their entrance. So, so they will be getting something. I get your point. They might be giving up something. And we need to try our best to come to something agreeable. But in the end, I don't think people should realistically expect, and I'm not saying you're suggesting it at all, that if, let's say you had a thirty-five foot, to use an extreme number, entrance, that I don't think anyone realistically expects that the taxpayer is going to improve it to a thirty-five foot. And in day and age, when we expect that road to be used at thirty-five miles an hour. So I, I, I think you're right. I think people, I think it's communication and people being reasonable and realizing they're going to be getting something, but they're also going to be giving something up in some cases.
Well, the one I looked at, which is not the, I'm not saying in any ways the typical, but you guys are too young to remember, the old red barn, which had an entrance and you'd go around through the drive-through, which in the back and come out the other side. Now it's a car lot. It's got a entrance on Twenty-Sixth Street. It's got two Broadway entrances that, that they park cars in front of. They don't use the entrances, so why not get rid of them?
I, I think part of it is we have to, we have to think about, the reason why the interstate can go so fast is because, isn't the official, it's like the controlled access highway or some designation like. But the reason why something can go faster is because there are fewer, can you imagine trying to go seventy or whatever speed you might be going on the interstate, miles an hour, if you had to worry about cross-traffic pulling in every equivalent of two blocks? And so this, this is supposed to be a faster road, not quite an interstate, but it's not supposed to be a twenty-five mile an hour, you know, residential street. And if, part of the concern I hear from a lot of people is they try to, to get around town or get to work. It's, it's, many times of the day, it's impossible to get anywhere near thirty-five miles an hour on that street because there's so many different turns. And it would help if, if folks would all signal them. But even if they did, and most people do, it's really hard to get that road up to a speed that people want to use it. Like frankly, if I have to get through there as opposed to going somewhere there, I tend to try to go another route because I think it's going to take forever. to try to go another route, because I think it's going to take forever, and I'm afraid of getting hit, because there's so many things going on, so many turns, and a lot of people say that too. So, frankly, I think if I'm going to a business there, I'm more likely to go there if I think I'm going to get there quicker and more safely. So, I think in the end, it'll help folks.
But...
I think we've got to have a two-way communication, though, you're right.
To me, if we're wanting people to go fast on there, don't we want people to slow down and turn to these businesses?
We want them to go 35, or we should change the speed limit, is kind of how I look at it.
Well, I mean...
I mean, we do have the turn lane, which we're keeping for the vast most part, in two lanes each direction. I don't want to go to a 25.
We will still provide access to the businesses. I mean, we can't...
Right. I understand that. So, like today, I was turning left on 21st, and I was in the turning lane. There was four cars lined up.
Yeah.
So, now, instead of being able, with that median there, and maybe not the median on 21st, there might not be a median on 21st, but if there's a median, and you're going up to the turning lane, only three cars, or I don't know how many with the distance, how many cars can get in that turning lane? The rest that want to turn are going to be stopped in that second lane. The rest are all going to be stopped in that second lane, because they can't get over because of that median, right? That's going to slow traffic down even more, in my opinion.
The spacing of the medians was based on a traffic review, and the number of cars expected to turn left, that queuing space was left, so that there's no median, so there's still storage for those vehicles. There could be an extreme example where there's many more than expected, or many more than, turn left today, for whatever reason, that instance could occur, where they would be stuck in the inside lane and couldn't pull into that queuing lane in the middle turn lane. But the concept shown in this master plan document represents the typical queuing space needed at each one of those intersections, so that that doesn't occur.
And we've kind of talked about this in general too, where we've given some grace. I can remember when Dick's Sporting Goods got built with Target, and we gave them some grace. And sometimes in our planning, we assume the worst. For example, we assume enough parking for, say, Black Friday, when most of the time, in my view, that's over capacity, because the average day is not going to need that many spaces, and if you're going to go Black Friday shopping, which I generally do, I don't know why, but I do, you expect to wait an awful long time. That's probably part of the fun, I don't know. But, so, when we don't want to incur that extra capacity, I guess what I'm trying to compare the two is, when we want to be reasonable with businesses and the amount of spaces they take, we also need to be reasonable with, I mean, there could be a day where, I don't know, the president, or some major concert happens in town, where suddenly 20 people need to turn left, but how often does it happen? I agree with you that it's part of working with the experts on staff and the consultants that we occasionally have, we need to look at, based on those traffic studies, how many cars normally turn on those streets and plan for it, so that we don't have, as best we can, people stuck in the active roadway, because that's unsafe. But plan for those normal days. Otherwise, we're going to be, just the cost of maintaining, sometimes we have really long turn lanes, that I have a hard time justifying why they go like three blocks, you know? And that's a lot of concrete or asphalt to keep up.
I think that bricks potentially could be worse.
Well, depending, it sounds like on those, that I agree, the current set out there don't look very good at all. Mostly, they look like sidewalk brick that were placed where vehicles go, and I take them at their word that we're going to use actual street brick, because those are sidewalk brick for the most part. And I agree, if we were going to put those in, that'd be foolish, but...
So, these are clay bricks that are similar to like the old style, like just up the street here? Like, they used to use clay?
They used to use Purinton pavers that are nine pounds apiece, yeah.
The ones proposed to go in the street are actually concrete.
Yeah.
They're our street paver.
Okay.
The ones that are proposed to go behind the curb are clay, just like the newer ones you see going out there today, and some of the redevelopments.
You don't want clay in the street, those are meant for horses.
Right.
And the salt, or even with the beet juice, they eat those alive.
The model we're using is 10th Street in Omaha, that has the similar type concrete pavers that have been installed for about 10 years, and are wearing very well, and look very good.
I'll have to go look at those.
They're pretty good there.
By DJs.
Yeah, they've held up really nicely there. They're meant for cars, the weight of cars.
Next question is, I had a business today ask me about if they're going to share a driveway, whose responsibility is it to plow it? Whose responsibility is it to, if somebody falls, and, because there's ice, and they slip and fall?
Those are all details that would have to be worked out as part of a plan to share a driveway. We'd have to have permanent cross easements that would be recorded at the county, so that they would go with the property, so that one property could cross the other property line to enter their business. Those are all the details that would have to be worked out if we were to do that scenario. That's why this plan doesn't touch on those, because it doesn't have that individual property detail in it.
Right.
And so, they would have to agree, and if two property owners can't get along, we'll never get a shared driveway put through, because they may hate each other, they may fight over who plows the snow which direction, and he always plows it onto my parking lot, and vice versa.
I'm just telling, these are the questions that I'm being asked, and that's why I'm bringing them up.
And we know that, once we talk about that, it opens a whole can of worms that we're going to have to work through, and we're going to have to manage that, because we're proposing it. If we want that to happen, we're going to have to have some sort of signed agreement that both property owners will sign, it will get filed with the county, and it'll have a cross easement-type document, so it'll be a permanent easement filed with that property to allow the adjacent property to enter onto their property for access to their parking lot, or drive-through, whatever it may be.
One of the things you can tell folks about that, by the way, is there is quite a bit of history in our community about shared driveways residential, you know, a lot of the older neighborhoods, when cars, after cars were invented, a lot of the houses, of course, are older than that, and they put in shared driveways, usually right along a boundary, which makes sense. You'll see, good and bad, you'll see people record things and responsibility, and occasional their disputes about it. Unlike residential, I see a lot less of people, you know, parking and blocking the entrance, because unlike a home, a business, that's not good for either business, if people are blocking it. But there will be some disputes probably about shoveling snow, like there is now, from what I can see, when the driveways are near each other. You know, you pushed it over onto mine, or what have you. But the beauty of having it all written down is that they'll all have to agree upfront, and then when people buy the ground later, all of that'll be in their title. So, they'll know what they're getting into.
Right. Another question I had that had been asked is, how did we decide where the medians go?
It was done based on where we thought it was the minimal impact to the businesses, and also allowing for queue links at the intersections. It was, there's no way to put any median of size that could accommodate all businesses. So, there, I mean, as you see in there, there's some that would be affected with a median, a raised median in the center turn lane. But it was our best approach at what would be the minimal impact, and still have some benefit to the project by adding green to the center.
And do you think it devalues somebody's property if you can't turn left into it?
I don't know that I can answer that question, the value of a property.
Sharon's not here, but...
That just depends on a lot of factors, just from a legal perspective. I mean, all things being equal, it probably would some, but depends what other improvements were there that might make up for it. But she, I defer to her...
Well, I know one that contacted me that has a median in front of it, it's not in this segment, but is the gorilla car worship, and he makes a valid point, when people, washing your car is kind of an impulse deal, and when you drive by...
Yeah, I talked to Jeff today.
Yeah, he called me.
I did, he, you know, that's...
When you drive by, you keep on going, you won't come back around, you'll go down to 35th and wash your car.
Right, you'll go right onto the next one, you know, or any of these places, you know, it's basically creating a unfair competition.
But one of them, I looked at is, was by 32nd, which is by the clinic, and then the cross street is the cross street that goes into Romanics, and is not a busy...
By TS Bank there?
Well, this is segment two.
So, yeah, just east of TS Bank.
So, you, that's not a busy intersection, you get a little stacking that allows people to come into the, come into the Allegiant Healthcare Center. It makes it a little difficult to get into Timothy Lutheran Church, but that's not an impulse stop. So, they were strategic in where they put that, I think.
We do have the, one of the design team members who helped lay out the medians, who's here. If you want him to speak, he can talk about the benefits of the median, what they add to the project, give you more details on how they chose the locations. That opportunity is here if you want it, so...
Well, yeah, I mean, even, I mean, yeah, I would like that, but now that Sharon's here, I'd like to ask her that too.
I wonder if the value of a property would go down, all other things being equal, if there's a median, meaning people couldn't left turn into it.
You know, I don't do commercial, so I've never analyzed those statistics, so I don't really know.
Okay.
I believe from the DOP perspective that that, that access would not be compensable, it would not be pretty.
I think that's right.
Legally, I don't believe that the city would be held responsible for damages, taking away electrons, because they still have access.
To me, part of that goes into the cost of, you're getting a new street, you're getting storm sewers, that's being borne by all the taxpayers as a whole, benefits everybody, but particularly benefits an adjoining landowner. What's something they're going to give to the benefit of society back? You can't all just... And I'm not saying they're being greedy, I'm just saying that we have to, in our chair, I think we have to look at the benefits to everybody as a whole, and what's fair. They're getting a lot of good out of it, they can't get just good, in my view.
I guess...
And having a giant expanse of concrete in the middle was what we did in 1949, 50, and I don't think it was right then, but I definitely don't think it's right up into 2100.
So, my question is, do you think, and I know we have a fundamental disagreement on this...
Yeah, we do.
But do you think these medians in the middle of Broadway are going to help or hurt businesses that are already there?
Doug, this is Doug Lamson with Chrome &amp; Design.
Hi. Well, the discussion about medians came up as an alternative originally, to meet the goals of the project. And the goals of the project were to create a front door to the city, to bring people into the city in a corridor that looks like it's cared for, that represents the values of the community, and can make that statement and make the connections that aren't there today. So, we have the gateway at the west end, and then there's downtown, in between, there's Thomas Jefferson High School, and also the viaduct. The viaduct, TJ, and the gateway were improved years ago, and this project is an opportunity to link all of that up and make public improvements that are visible, that create a single identity for the corridor. So, how do you do that? Some of the concerns were raised right away, because the right-of-way is so narrow. The width of the right-of-way only goes to the back of sidewalk, roughly speaking, throughout the corridor. So, unlike most corridors that have been redeveloped, that I've had experience with here in Council Bluffs, like Avenue G, or South Omaha Bridge Road, now Veterans Memorial Highway, you can't actually have the opportunity to plant and create this green space on the edges, unless the public owners, private owners do that themselves. So, what else can you do, was the question, to make those improvements, and the median came up. Well, it's unusual these days to have a continuous double-left turn lane on a major arterial in a situation such as this in many cities. And what are the reasons for that? Safety is a big reason, but another reason is redevelopment. It really is a vestige of very small lots, and very small businesses, and some homes that created this architecture that we're working with out there now. So, as time goes on, it is changing. You see the difference when Hy-Vee came in, the difference when Allegiant Health came in. They don't need as many curb cuts, they have larger parking lots, they have a larger business. That is the trend with the redevelopment that's going on. So, that was the start of the conversations on medians, and then came the traffic study. And the traffic study showed that the accidents, the actual crashes on West Broadway are over two times the state average. And the question was, why? Well, the answer that was proposed by the reviewer, the traffic engineer, was that there were too many movements, too much going on, too many choices, ins-outs, too many driveways, if you will, as well as a double turn lane. So, people, it's almost a free-for-all, in some sense of the word, where people are going any way they want. So, channeling that a little bit is one way to deal with that problem. And the Federal Highway Administration has reported that when a median goes into a situation like this, it can reduce accidents and crashes by 23%. So, the possibility is there to actually make that happen. Another problem out there is, some of these crashes are with pedestrians running across the road mid-block, and this would help to curb some of that as well. So, there's some benefit from a safety standpoint, and of course, it's all just based on statistics, and would have to be verified by using it, but there's also a big improvement in terms of aesthetics. So, the idea was, gee, if you, you know, if you actually put some planting and have a nice-looking median in the middle, like Council Bluffs has on so many of the corridors, that it would improve people's perception of the corridor and its continuity, and have a look and a feel more as a neighborhood, a little bit more as a neighborhood street than as a commercial strip, which it appears to be these days.
Isn't it a commercial strip?
Well, it's, I think it's the west ends downtown. Oftentimes, I think a lot of folks, particularly the farther east one lives, and that's where I'm from, so I'm not making fun of anybody, tend to see it as, that's how I get through there, I don't stop there, and it's how I get to Omaha. And I'd like to de-emphasize the, let's flee and spend our money elsewhere, and make it, no, that's the west end, it is a cool place to be, let's have people from the east, and wherever else, go there, rather than go to downtown Omaha. You know, I don't, I just don't think we give it enough credit, and I'm not saying you don't at all. I'm just saying that, on the whole, I think most people don't give West Broadway enough credit. They see it as a way to get to Omaha and get a cheeseburger, and it's so much more than that.
See, I don't, I guess if all those businesses are already there, I don't see how anybody can think that. I mean, these people invested before it was, whatever you want to call it, pretty, you know, or makes it, you know, these medians aesthetics, these people all invested before it was pretty.
I think in the end, it will help them, because if you want people into the future to go there, rather than just use it as, let's get through there quickly to get to Omaha to do stuff there, if you want money to go there, you're going to have to give people a reason to go there. The reason why areas elsewhere thrive is pretty aesthetics, or what people, especially people with money, want to spend it on.
Are you going to, are you going to tell me that you'll turn into a place, have a more likelihood of turning into a place, because there's a median in the middle of the road versus not?
I will turn into a place, for example, I have been far more likely the last five years to go to the 100 block than before, because before, it looked like a place that was rundown, that people didn't care about. And I thought, and just in my own personal view, since you asked, I don't go to a business if it looks like that they don't have pride in the outside of it, because I think, ugh, the food's going to be awful.
But that has nothing to do with the median.
Yes, it does, because when I see the median on the 100 block, I think, you know what, if this area takes care and has pride, it's probably a place that I'm not going to get sick, and I'm going to enjoy.
But these businesses aren't going to maintain these medians, Nate.
That's the beauty of it, they don't even have to pay to maintain it. We all will pay to maintain it, so they get the benefit of it, just like the 100 block area gets the benefit of it, even though they've helped voluntarily with some of it. The general taxpayer still does keep most of the cost. But in the end, if more people go there, and there are a lot of particularly younger folks that go to that area that used to go to Omaha, and so, we're keeping that money in, so people there have jobs, and those businesses pay taxes, and so, I think that they're, over the long term, it's going to be an investment in that infrastructure that'll pay off. It seems to me that's an area where government appropriately helps businesses make the money. If we just rebuild the road to 1950 standards, and expect the last 50 years, that road, if you look at 1950 and the activity it had at that time, we're nowhere near what it used to be. And I mean, no disrespect to people, they'll ask, if you ask old timers in the area, they'll say there's a lot less than there used to be. It's good, but it's not like it used to be.
A lot less.
A lot less businesses, people making money, especially local businesses employing local people living Council Bluffs. And it's because, because other... And it's because, because other areas have taken advantage of this change. And as to our west, when they tear down, which I think they will tear down a lot, of the unfortunate suburbanization of the former Jobbers Canyon and start putting in things like what used to be. If we don't find a way to, and we've got a head start of at least five or ten years. If we don't find a way of keeping those folks, all of our particularly younger folks and people with disposable income are going to keep going to Omaha. And those businesses on the, on west, West Broadway, in the end, we do them no favors by sticking to the past. I love the past in many ways, but if we stick to this as a throughway, I, and I'll be honest, I, like a lot of other people, don't do a lot of stopping on West Broadway, because I use it on the way to Omaha. Or I use it on the way back from Omaha to our downtown or our east. Because I look at it and I don't see it as a place to stop, I see it as a throughway. And I'm just being honest. I wish, and now over time, I've gotten to see that that's not true, but I don't think most people have the benefit we get, sitting up here and getting to interact around town with different sections.
I would agree, but you see it as a place to drive through. These medians are gonna, it would make me less likely to stop, because I can't get to the business.
You can't turn around, take ninety seconds.
But you know you don't want to.
If I want, if it's a really cool place to go to.
The businesses aren't going to change because of the median?
Yes, they will, and that's one thing, I guess, I wanted to say is that, first, I did go to the public meetings at T J when they introduced us to the public. And I heard a lot about the medians, that was a really big topic. But the topic was whether to have trees in them or not have trees in them, it wasn't whether to have them or not. I heard a little bit of that, you know, obviously, but mostly what people were telling me was that they liked them, they just didn't want trees in them, that was a big deal for them. But I would tell you that the property values on West Broadway have not gone up. You have not seen any revitalization down there. And the city, over the years I've lived here, you know, I grew up here, have tried different things. They tried putting the utilities underground, they tried the brickwork, they've tried these things to soften the hardscape down there, because it is just such a concrete canyon is what it is. And when you don't take the time to do some of these meetings, you know, we've got medians every, in a lot of places in town, and we're so used to them, we don't think about it. But if you look at North Sixteenth Street, there's a median that runs the entire length of North Sixteenth Street. And I'd have to quite imagine that people still use those businesses. It's just that we're used to it, so we don't think about it. We know we're going to have to go up to B, or we know we're going to have to go up to, you know, whatever intersection to get through. But there, that's complete median all the way out to the interstate. So I think that, yes, it'll be hard to get used to, but I see, I drive Broadway a lot. And so what I see is, I see, we have an awful lot of foot traffic crossing in the middle. I see a lot of near misses, I call them suicide lanes. When you've got turn lanes and traffic coming from both ways, people use them as acceleration lanes to get into traffic, which is really dangerous, because you've got cars coming the other way that want to use them in a turn. And then you've got a guy going thirty miles an hour trying to get up to speed to get in. So I find them to be something that should help tame traffic. If you, I'm in Papillion and Bellevue a lot, and those are areas that have seen a lot of revitalization. And almost everywhere in those communities that they've revitalized, it's right in, right out, that's your only options. And even where there's not a median, they put signs up prohibiting anything other than a right in or a right out. And it's due to safety, it's due to keep the traffic moving. I mean, we've got things on West Broadway that, we've got an awful lot of fast food, which is great, and I do go there. But the problem is, is that those drive-throughs get backed up each hour. And so then they start stacking on Broadway, and part of that is, is that you can't go around because they can't get back out, because they're trying to go left. Now, I just go right, go up to Avenue B and come back around. But people will sit there until they can get a break in the traffic to take a left. And in the meantime, all the traffic at that drive-through has gone around the building, is backing up and stacking back out on Broadway. I just think that, you know, some of these medians will make an awful lot of sense in keeping the traffic movements limited, keep the traffic moving, and keep those stacking lanes from getting too stacked up.
So should we put it through the whole Broadway, I mean, the whole way? I mean, if that.
I think cost would prohibit that. You know, in the beginning, these medians, my understanding, they're not inexpensive to do. So I would say that right now, you know, obviously, we're looking for grant money to help do some of this, but I don't think we could afford to do it the whole length. But I would also say that if I look at North Sixteenth and I drive these streets on a daily basis, the traffic movements are much smoother on North Sixteenth than what they are on Broadway.
You know, I.
I'd like to have a full median.
I wanted it, I also wanted trees. As part of this discussion, lots of people didn't, they wanted the ability to still have left turns at significant junctures, and I think that was a reasonable compromise. I think as part of it, though, the folks who got that compromise should remember that and not say, well, we should get rid of it entirely, whoa, 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 we've already done the compromise on that. We can't keep going and going until they get a hundred percent of what they want. The other thing I've seen, in my day job, I have occasions during the day to see a lot of Lincoln doing this process. And they not only, by the way, had done a full median and a full dedicated bike lane, but those areas have seen an increase of the low twenties percent in the last eighteen months in their businesses, particularly their small businesses, I checked with their Chamber of Commerce. It's mainly because people, particularly millennials ironically, and retiring baby boomers, the two bookends, I suppose. But particularly, particularly millennials, this is a good compliment, I swear. They, not to paint with too broad a brush, though it sounds like I am, but the idea of it's a destination place to go, you want to go there, you want to spend your money. We're a service-based economy now, we, people like to go someplace to see, to be seen. It's kind of the legalized version of, I suppose, cruising of a different era. I think in the end, change is scary, I get that, but I think we've already made a significant compromise. I was sad to see the trees go, I was probably one of the few, frankly, but I was. I'm sad to see the median not be the whole way, or not be the whole way except maybe four or five main intersections. So I, and some of those predate your time in, on the council. So I just wanted to let you know that there have been quite a few compromises by the, albeit much smaller, but vocal minority, that included me, to make those changes in reaction. So just so you know, and I know this isn't your intention, but when I hear now, let's get rid of them entirely, I think, whoa, 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 we've already come to a compromise. In a compromise, you never get a whole loaf, you get half a loaf at best, and so everybody gets something. And so the compromise, I thought it was, and I still maintain is, let's reduce them. But to get rid of them entirely sets, throws open that whole debate of, if we do that, then frankly, from my perspective, I'm no longer willing to entertain paying for the upgrades to the businesses that connect to it. There are a lot of things that went with that as part of the, they get something, they give up something. They don't get to keep all those and get more, we reopen all that, and do they really want to do that? I doubt it, because I'm going to push really strongly then, if there isn't that public benefit, then we shouldn't be subsidizing with public money their entrances. So that was part of the compromise, at least to me, from my perspective, just so you understand where I'm coming from.
Have there been, I haven't gotten any business emails or complaints. I've talked to several other businesses during the stakeholder meetings. Have you gotten calls and emails from businesses on West Broadway?
I showed, I showed five businesses today that have never even seen this document.
Well, they all got, they've all gotten mailed notices and public meetings and stakeholder meetings.
But, right or wrong, they didn't, they probably didn't go.
Now, Ballinger, I know has seen it, because his dad was there and he called me, so.
No, Jeff didn't, Jeff didn't say he hadn't seen it. But there were some that said they hadn't seen it. So what do you say to the guy that's got a median in front of his property, but his competition, ten blocks down the road doesn't? What do you say to this guy that you're creating an undue fair advantage for his competition? What do I tell the guy?
I'd tell the guy the same thing I would tell him, the fact that he doesn't have landscaping in front of his building, and a new building going in is required to have the landscaping. No, no two lots are the same on West Broadway. If I put a new business in now, I'm required to do a ten-foot landscaping strip. But the guy who's already there doesn't have to do it. Life's not fair, and you're never going to make it fair. My mom raised me, telling me that, and it's just a fact. Every business has a different advantage, depending on when they went in. Some businesses have to have signs that are at street level. Other businesses that have been there a long time, they get to have the big signs, because they were in first. So, you know, things change over the years, and those changes, in some instances benefited you as a business, because you got to keep your tall sign. And in some instances, where there's going to be a meeting, median, maybe it didn't benefit you. But over the years, you've gotten benefits and other things that have not been as good, but it, it's part of change. It's part of what we do as a city when we move forward and redevelop.
The only other alternative is to never change anything and to stick with the nineteen fifty road layout, which I hate always, words always and never, but if we stick with that layout of concrete, West Broadway will ultimately, maybe not in our lifetime, so maybe we'll see it, maybe, will in effect be dead. And I'm not saying it's anywhere close to being dead today at all, but it won't.
What happened back then, when all these other businesses went there because it was concrete?
If you look, if you look at the last fifty years compared to what used to be.
Car dealerships, fast food.
That's not a long-term viability strategy.
Auto parts businesses.
And I guess I would say, too, that the planned locations for the medians right now were purposefully planned for areas that would have minimal impact on folks. So you're talking about, in front of T J, so you've got a lot of T J campus there, they're very aware of it. They came to the stakeholder meetings. You've got down by Allegiant, where they have a large parcel there that it would have minimal impact. Now, Hy-Vee was a little concerned about a small median, which would have been east of the intersection, that would be in front of like the China Walk, is that what it's called? And Hy-Vee, and that's a small median, but it will, obviously, then it breaks before you get to the intersection, so it's not a very large one. But that's also an area where you see a lot of pedestrians crossing in the mid-block there. So that might be helpful in keeping people safe there. But most of the medians were planned for areas that would have the least amount of impact on business.
Only one I've seen that has, maybe not a fair statement. The one who spoke with me that I thought concern was legitimate was Gorilla Car Wash. And ironically, both Ballingers came, Bill runs the business. Bill said, this is beautiful, this is fantastic, I love it. Jeff called me and said, don't listen to my dad, he doesn't know what he's talking about. And so it was interesting, the money that started the business is Bill's, Bill runs the day-to-day operations of the business. But I think Jeff's got a legitimate point. He said, and maybe Bill didn't comprehend that, that when someone driving, going west, can't get over there, they'll go right on down to Andrews and wash their car there.
Well, and that little segment, I mean, since you raised that segment, there does appear to be other potential conflicts there involving Godfathers and Village Inn. And you could kind of say the same thing about those sorts of businesses, that it may, with other food options available in the area, you know, that it will probably.
I think people adapt and they'll figure out how to get there. If I want to go to Godfathers, I need to turn here and get there, but the car washes are on both sides of them, I think.
One of the things that's been discussed through this entire process is that, once Broadway's done, the discussion has been to make Avenue A a two-way street, to bring it back to a community-type street. So that'll give you the option to go around the block, where that's not so easy right now. But I guess the other thing is, is that one of the most interesting people at the stakeholders meeting was Grease Monkey. Now, I've watched Grease Monkey, man, they have, they have had their business impacted so many times, it's unbelievable, by the reconstruction of the north-south street that abuts them. They've had to redirect their traffic in there many, many times, so I was worried about them. Here we go again, you know, and they've got a difficult problem in getting people back out of there when it's being done in front of theirs. And you know what he said, we did not see any drop in our business. When people want to come here, they know how to get here, and they get here. And I could have been more shot, because I honestly thought that, of anybody, I would feel like they were going to be very vocally mad about this, because they've been impacted so many times. Then, no, people will find their way here.
If you really want to go to a business and to avoid giving advantage to any, well, then there's a particular grocery business on that street and a particular fast food business, that's the only of its kind in our community of that brand, that I make it a point. No, make it a point to go to both of those, even though I detest, I dread driving there because of the left turns necessary to get back onto traffic, and the number of people who, the red light is apparently somewhat optional, at the ones that don't have the cameras, I notice particularly, where they're not getting fined. And so the number of near misses I face, but I'll go there because they're businesses I want to go to. I think, I think most people could say that of the same of at least a couple of businesses they go to there. And the question I get a lot from residents on the west end is, why do you put in these beautification corridors in the center and in the east, and then nothing for us? I, that's what I mostly hear, and maybe it's, we all, and one of the great blessings of being at-large is we can focus on different topics, and you focus more on business than I do, and I have great respect for you for that. I tend to focus more on the residential, like neighborhood piece, that's, I guess, something that I focus on. And they tell me why, from their perspective, why does the east get these things? And I'm saying, no, 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 look at, look at all the things we're doing, and this is one of my prime examples, of, it seems to me that when I, you know, in the center-east where I am, you know, we have all of these beautifications, and if I go to the closest things to my house, I get to see beautiful trees and irrigated landscaping, and my, some of my cousins and a couple of my aunts and uncles who live off of West Broadway in the west end, don't. And I don't have a ready-made example for that, or answer for that, as to why I should get that in front of my house, and they don't. And I think, I think we're addressing a historical imbalance by a lot of the things we're focusing on the west. And I think we ought to give it a shot, because in the end, with the greatest of respect, the other areas that are getting full-line restaurants and banks and establishes of that nature, for West Broadway to survive long-term, like any, like any other area, it can't just be, it can't just have one type of business, or it'll, or long-term, it won't succeed. And I think West Broadway is more likely to get a diversification of business in all those empty spaces we have. I'm not saying push out existing businesses, I'm saying we've got a lot of empty space we'd love to see sold. And I think we'd all agree that we don't want every square inch of it to be fast food or used car sales, because that's not good for any street, you need some diversification. And I think you're more likely to get these other businesses, when they come in with their site selectors, if they see it as a happening place that, that people are willing to go and spend money at. And the way the street currently looks, and I think we all agree, the way the street currently looks is not terribly inviting, especially the fact that it's underwater, and I don't think we disagree about that. But, but I just think we ought to add some aesthetic improvements. I think we've gone a long way to a compromise to meet many of the concerns. I fully admit, we don't meet all of them. The one you raised, we, no, that isn't fully met. But the only way to fully meet that is to give a hundred percent of what they want. But then, they, if we're going to reopen that negotiation, then I will insist that we negotiate whether we pay for the improvements that connect their properties, because they're not getting that, from my perspective. They're not getting that if they're not willing to give that. They can't have everything at the taxpayers' expense and nothing back to the general. So I don't know if they really want to open that all up, and I just say that in all candor, because I don't, I think they need to look at the whole deal.
Well, another, you know, Matt said, he sees legitimacy in Gorilla Car Wash.
Yeah.
Jimmy John, I talked to Jimmy John today, and they're.
They don't have a Broadway entrance.
They're closing Seventeenth Street, so coming east, you can't turn left into their Seventeenth Street entrance, because there's a median right in front of Seventeenth Street. So I think that is another big concern for a business owner.
Did you make them aware that, you know, Avenue A is scheduled then to become a two-way? Would that have changed their thoughts on that?
I don't know if it would have changed their thoughts, and I did not make them aware of that.
Because that would make a big difference for me as a business to know that, because the one-way is difficult. You know, I can't turn a block early and then come back at it.
One-way is a perfect way to ruin an area, unless you're in a very, very dense urban Manhattan-type situation. When you're just trying to move the cars, it's a great way of getting people through there and nobody ever stopping, and it kills. That's why so many houses have disappeared in that area, because why would you want to live on a one-way that people are using as an express? And so when we go back to a two-way, I think you're going to see more, you're going to see more residences in that area again. And if you start having people live in areas, so that there's always people around in area twenty-four-seven, the quality of life goes up, the value goes up. I think, I think that's a major, I think you're right to raise that.
Well, just fair warning, some of the businesses I talked to tonight will be here, today, will be here tonight.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
And, and express concerns about, you know, that, whether it's, this is, this obviously is not a set-in-stone document, but it is a goal, a plan, and when they see this, they have concerns, so.
I think it's very surprising, though, that you had to go out and take this to them. It's been in the newspaper, it's been online, we've had public meetings, we've sent mailings to all of these businesses, and yet, we're finally to this point tonight to vote on it, and they didn't, they weren't aware of it until you took it to them.
Well, I would agree.
So, I honestly don't understand.
They need to do their own work.
Right, and I'm, I'm not discounting that Matt did that, or anybody, that they could've gone to these public meetings, but nonetheless, they still haven't seen it. So when they saw it for the first time, they were, they showed concern, and, and a lot of them will be here tonight, I'll tell you that.
That's fair, fair enough, just so they understand, it wasn't like we were hiding it, I just, I think in fairness, I think they need to understand that we tried.
I don't think anybody thinks that, I don't think anybody thinks that.
Just so they, just so they know it's not hide the ball.
But as I said to Matt, two weeks ago, or four weeks ago, whatever it was, I had, you know, there's a special Facebook page for this, well, I had never seen it, and none of you guys had said you had ever seen it.
That's true.
And I'm on Facebook all day, every day. I mean, I'm on there a lot, let's be real.
Now, the bus, the businesses got mailings that had that web address on there. Um, I saw the pamphlets they were sent, I've seen the materials they were sent, so I'm just shocked that, you know, if there were those concerns, they didn't look at them.
You know, I, I would agree, but, and I talked to, and not one person said they, they knew about it, or they knew that the median was gonna be in front of their business, and so, I'm not saying that we didn't try, but they didn't get the message, however we conveyed it.
Who's the Jimmy John guy, is he the store manager?
No, he's the owner, he's the owner. He's the owner, he's in Omaha.
I know a lot of them did, though, I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm sure a lot of them did, but the businesses I walked into today had not seen it. So it's, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but they still hadn't seen it.
And some changes were made based on those concerns.
Significant changes.
Significant changes, so I guess I would say that, you know, had they come sooner, um, if they would've, you know, read the mail, you know, read the pamphlets, come to any of the meetings, their input would've absolutely been considered, but, you know, I, I guess I'm just really surprised that.
At some point, we have to move.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, I'm, I'm not.
Because then I'll have to go back to the people that wanted the medians and go door-to-door and say, do you know that these guys are trying to take your medians away, you need to come to the next meeting because we're gonna just keep this ball rolling. Well, you know, that's not fair either, they were all there, they did the inputs, there was a place where you could give your comments in a, either online or in a feedback box, all those were read and addressed, people's emails were returned, anybody that emailed a concern, got an email back, um, so.
I know, I, I know ignorance is not.
No, just, just as long as they realize it's been a long process, whether they, whether they've been involved or not, we've tried, plus, there've been a lot of compromises along the way, and they're getting a lot of good out of it. If they push for a hundred percent, they may get less than the current deal, the odds would favor it. So, just so, just so they know.
Yeah, and, and I'm just, I told all of them to come talk to council tonight, because I'm not, obviously, not the only one making any sort of decision here.
Oh, of course, of course.
At all, so I just said, come to the council meeting.
We find this so much, though, and so many issues that come before us, that we think we've done everything possible to get the message out, and there's still those that just, that the message isn't reaching them, so.
Well, do you remember, I remember Hanafin saying, and I, I was elected the fall, so after the, the flood didn't happen, thank goodness, um, and he always, and at the time it was happening, I was on his neighborhood cabinet, and he was talking about how when, when Alan Byers and all of his, of his folks were, were going around the west end warning of the evacuation plans, there was a sizable, and I forget the percentage he gave me.
It was a large percentage.
It was like thirty, let's say thirty percent, it was, it was, it shocked me, it still shocks me, who had no idea, none, and I, I, I believed them.
That there was a flood.
That there was a potential that the river was up over twice its normal height, and that their house could be under fifteen feet of water in an hour and a half.
No, it was frightening when we found that out.
Thirty percent had no clue what was going on in the world locally to them. And so, I, I'm not saying that to make fun of people, I'm just saying to remember that in this job, you'll learn that a lot of people, because they're, they're very busy in their lives, and some people are less tuned in to, to news than others, and it's a free country, but at the same time, there's only so mu- that taught me then that there's only so much we can do, we, we try our best, but there's always gonna be folks who for one reason or another, often good excuses, it doesn't really matter, they just don't know.
And, and I'll.
And that just happens.
I'm sure there's a number of neighborhood things that you're getting out and talking to neighbor, neighbors about it that I'm not doing, so this is, this is my focus, yeah, it's back to, this is, this is what I'm, you know.
Yeah, and you bring a very valid point to, to the table, I appreciate it.
So was it phone calls or emails from a few businesses that led you to go out to the businesses to ask them if they knew about it?
Some of that, yeah, yep.
All right, anything more for Doug?
One more question, this is more for Matt, sorry Doug, thank you for.
Sorry.
One more thing for Matt, a lot of this streetscape, the median also, and the, the streetscape, it's all contingent on Iowa West funding a lot of this, correct?
Correct.
So should we wait for Iowa West to say, we're gonna do some of this, or, because it, because if Iowa West doesn't fund this, we're not putting this stuff in, correct?
Right.
Right, so it doesn't change anything, or we have to find a different funding source? We're asking them to be that funding source, if for some reason they wouldn't.
They're gonna fund certain things, they're gonna fund the bricks, they're gonna fund the pedestrian lights, over and, and those are not insignificant expenses.
No, I'm sure they're.
Those are probably six million of the nine million in expenses, and so, they are looking at an additional three million and deciding whether or not, and I think that was discussed at their board meeting a week ago, I don't know if they gave any resolution on it or not, but.
And in my experience with them, you, you have to have these plans in place because they won't, and fair enough to them, I wouldn't either if, if I were in their position. Um, they, they won't fund just ideas, they need to see concrete plans that are approved by the appropriate governing bodies and so forth, where everything gets real. And you're right, if, if, if we don't end up with money for those, I agree, general taxation not, not to pay for, for those, but then we just don't put that piece in, I mean.
Or we find a different.
Or we find a different, that, that's what I'd push for, yeah.
Um, and I guess I would say too, if we're not committed to it, why, how can we possibly ask them to be, so.
I would suggest that you do consider approving it in the plan, just because, again, this is the goal, the objective, the desire for West Broadway. Even if we weren't able to accomplish it with the reconstruction this year, maybe some of those features could be placed in behind the curb with future funding, unknown at this point, but it's still what we want it to look like. So if you agree that that's what we wanna, want it to look like, then I think it's good to approve the master plan because it's not the design document.
The day at staff meeting, Greg said it may take twenty years to get it completed.
May.
Yep, but obviously, we recognize that the city has a limited amount of budget, the project will be designed to that budget if we don't have additional funding.
True, and, thanks, Matt.
Anything else on this topic?
All right. Um, executive session.
We should go to executive session.
I know, we're definitely not approving B two.
This appropriate topic for executive session, so it's only one point five.
I made the motion, who seconded, sorry.
And that will be discussing property acquisitions.
Did you second it?
B two.
Eight, I will, I second.
Okay.
B two, what did we talk, what did I miss?
Property acquisition.
Liquor license. Yeah. Let's go. She doesn't get it.